Well, hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Look at you, that's a pretty child.
I have a mask, but I'm good.
Yeah. I got you, I got you.
Where am I at?
To find your name up on that thing in front of it. You may have gone to.
I may have.
I think she's right here.
I'm out here.
Is that one right there?
I didn't see it.
Okay, right here.
Good, okay. This one?
It's not written on the back, so. Yeah, that's it.
Is it?
Yes.
Right behind you. That's a goodie trick. Take a shot at the snatch before Dale gets you after that is.
Yeah, I'm off the sugar right now, so I'm good.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Bill.
We're kind of limited in our house on it too. Your former coworker has lost about a hundred and thirty plus pounds.
Say again?
I said your former coworker has lost approximately a hundred and thirty plus pounds.
I know, I've heard this.
Yeah, you think she's somebody now?
She's always been somebody. I know, she looks good the other day, what I saw of her face.
Oh, okay.
Are you okay to take pictures in here? I want to take a picture of my wife.
Yeah, of course. Today you'll be presented with what?
Oh, I am?
I'm asking.
Oh, I don't, no, I mean not front, but.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah.
I run for RSCC member, senior member. District of Fifth Valley.
And you run for what now?
As a local and state senate committee member.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's see what happens.
Hi, Chris.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Just fine.
Good, good. Staying busy?
Yes, sir.
Great. Since you and I were not here last month, I'm going to invite you to do an invocation or short one if you don't mind.
I was here.
Oh, were you?
I think I even managed to do one.
Oh, I thought they said Joseph, I read it wrong, I'm sorry. Very good.
I'm trying to get my name black.
Why don't you let me take a picture of you sitting up there?
That'd be good.
Stay, let me come down there, show me how to use you.
That's my first reading, so. I'll take it anyway.
You guys smile, okay. Well, you can flip it down, take a picture, come on.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
So we can remove this if we're behind in our cage?
Well, I'm getting a picture, I'm not sure. It's my first time in a cage.
First time in the home too, I didn't come.
Cancel?
Check to make sure I got it.
It is a bomb, it's a galaxy.
Probably, but I don't.
How is it, you know my cousin Jay?
What's he did?
So you're gonna get a camera?
Yeah.
Good, I'm good. Oh, I'm glad you've been there because I'm friends with his sister. Yeah. Okay, yeah, thanks for that.
I don't know what's going on.
I think I'm at a, at, uh.
The world's graduation.
Yeah. How'd you get involved in this?
I can answer that, she showed up for a meet and, and got the mob to sit down and be quiet for just a few minutes? And that's how she got.
Somebody's got to be in charge.
You, yeah.
That's right, I remember, I remember now, it started, the mask throws me off.
Chris, that was my janitor and me.
I'll never forget it, I was trying, I was trying to protect you.
You done, look, you have no idea.
That's the one.
One day I'll tell you about that day.
Oh, I know, it was terrible.
To be in the film and come here was just awful.
This is.
Hi!
Hey, man, is that you?
It's me, I'm back here.
Come on in.
I wrote my little things for us, I'm not going to say them loud, but.
I think I'm going to get me one of those, this is just.
Oh, no, I'm gonna.
Would you like one?
You got one?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I got, I got it, sure.
Can't wear readers with it, though.
No, luckily I have on my bike.
I think you have to peel off of.
Yeah, I'm surprised they haven't caught this yet, I feel like it's coming. They're not very careful.
And they're grown.
Oh, no, actually, yeah, good.
Well, now you're ready. You're right, just like any job.
Yeah, we started three o'clock and I think we can, we almost have a quarter, one more, we have a quarter.
Oh, my gosh, this is so much better.
Doesn't matter, it's crazy, I know.
I've been, I've been passing them by the door. This is like, oh, I'm shocked.
I think you could put readers underneath it, it would all stay.
Is that what? Oh, actually, I'm a widow, and that is my man, my husband, same as your kid.
Yes, it would be right on top of that.
That's my brother. I can't believe somebody knows him, how would you know him? Huh? Uh-huh. How do you know him?
I'm not really looking.
Oh, 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 my gosh. Oh, yeah, that's my brother. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, I will, I will, I think that is so funny. I am a city girl, absolutely opposite, you just never know.
Is he a real estate?
He always wants. We kind of get, that's kind of like a family, like. Alan. I could see him looking like, I'm not, I'm like, I don't care if I conversation, I'm really good. Now, he knows my brother. Yeah, my brother. It's all old, that's Nashville, bro.
Yes.
Yeah. Still down? Well, I mean, I usually send them on weekends, I will send them over the holidays. Yes, I will, I'm, I'm, I'm like, oh, nobody knows our family.
Oh, yeah.
It would be the best.
Yeah, I had a home near Cameron. So I'm planning out this show, now I didn't even know, somebody sent it to me.
Your house?
Yes.
Is it damaged?
Yeah, it was, I was like, wow. Somebody said, hey, your house is.
Wow, really? Wait, are y'all living in it?
No, no, it's my second home.
Oh.
It's our, it's our hand.
Okay, gotcha.
It's a second home, it's just a place we go if we're waiting.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it's, uh, no, it's not like, it's just a hair on your finger, it's, it's terrible, I've never seen this before in my life.
And where is any of that?
It's in Cameron.
Help me.
Oh.
Somebody does a camping camp.
Do you stop at where he's?
Um, your way, oh, yeah.
The next, the next.
We went through Rita and Ike. I've kind of more used to being, we had. Yeah, Rita came up here, everybody thinks, now y'all finally got a hurricane in your area. Because everybody thought, oh, that wasn't hurricane, I said, no, that was hurricane. Oh, but then, but, I got, because I'm so used to after a storm, I had a good long rain, so I got some doggy. Of course, he didn't have any insurance, didn't have a driver's license. Luckily, I have an insured motorist, because, I mean, the fact that he didn't have one of the cars in the shop, I have a bad watch when I'm in with things like, you better, you better. This is not the person you want to hit, you don't have insurance. Yeah, well, now. I am uninsured motorist, so I'm not really worried about it, but it's just the idea that, you know. I mean, he was, I went to go get the accident report, he admitted, he saw the light was not functioning, but he didn't slow down. Then you go up to the light and see it's burnt out, and start to slow down, you're going to have to do something, you know. Yeah. You don't use a mercy, do you? Oh, okay, it's a sports car. You know how men are, in particular, it's a double-breasted sports car.
Usually a little bit aggressive, my preference, though.
Okay, ready. I know how real it is, especially with COVID.
Dry it out, isn't it?
It's like musical chairs out there, here, we're like a hamster, when you're looking at the hamster feet.
Which hamster do you want?
It's funny, because I went to the bank, remember how we were growing up, had bank bills and all this. These types of things, and now, it's like, oh, there we do, it's like, everybody's got.
Fix for the contractors always. So we haven't had much of a kit to fix anymore. I got my things. Oh, sorry, Vivian.
Good, good.
Was that?
Your gang doing okay?
Yeah.
Well, you know what? This one doesn't even have a speaker. This one, then, then it has a speaker, and you have your choice.
So now they're not.
Yeah.
She's on back.
How are you? Can you see him?
Likewise.
You busy?
Yes, blessed to be busy.
That's good.
If I'm busy, we got something.
I understand that.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I have done, but I don't have the pictures.
I love that you kids are doing the pictures.
Oh, man.
That is amazing.
Right, they do it all themselves.
That's so great. Our future, that's beautiful. No, not that I know of, I haven't looked down.
Which one's yours? Right here.
I haven't checked my email.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Three Ford Cattle Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting. As always, we welcome you to this particular event. We will begin with the opening with an invocation by Mr. Chris Elderson and pledge of allegiance slip by Mrs. DeMarto. If you care to stand and join us, please do so.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together to serve our fellow citizens. Be with us and guide us as we work together through this important business. We pray for those affected by the storms and illness, we ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Throw in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands the one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you guys very much. This particular time, I'd like to share with you some of the procedures that we will be expected to follow today. Welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Three Ford Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips that the speakers stand next to the podium. For future, for further notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come in, when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the MPC staff, case manager, then the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted to the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on the case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to make comments. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 PM on tomorrow, or by accessing our website at threefortcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission's taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing bodies about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Having covered that, I would entertain a motion for approval of minutes from the August 12th Tuesday meeting. So, motion by Mr. Joseph, second by Ms. DeMarto, all in favor, please vote yes. All right, motion, thank you very much. As we move into our consent agenda items, two consent agenda items, at this particular time, is there anyone here interested in speaking on case number 20-2-SP Final Flat? Anyone in opposition? I will share with you, you may come forward, but unless you have an opposition to this, I would invite you to just hold your peace. All right. Anyone in opposition to this property? All right. We'll take a look at case number 20-3, SP Final Flat, same situation. If there are no opposition, we'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items as approved by the staff.
Motion. Motion to per.
Motion by Ms. DeMarto.
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Joseph, all those in favor, please vote yes. Pleased to share with you that your work is done. We will now move into our scheduled public hearing, case number 20-85-C zoning request. We have H and R investments.
Hi, everyone, my name's Ben Muller, I'm the planner that worked on this case. This is 20-85-C, which is a rezoning request from C2 to C3 on the 300 block of East 71st Street. The applicant is requesting approval to have exactly, approximately .70 acres rezoned from C2, which is corridor commercial to C3 for general commercial. I believe their plans for the site are for, to eventually develop it into a used car lot, but they are well aware that they will still be required to get a special use permit before they are allowed to actually set up as a used car lot. As usual, this is just the rezoning request for today. For a couple past cases, the site did have a deny, or the area did have a denial of a rezoning request back in 91 for a similar B2 to, B3, which would be in modern terminology, that C2 to C3 change, that was a denial. As well as a couple site plan approvals back in '08, let's see here, 2017 and 2019. For some just general background that isn't actually in the staff report with that land, because if you see, and I apologize, I have to work the projector as well. The vacant lot, or it's completely a vacant lot right now, I believe there was a grocery store to the north that was using it as parking, parking back in the day. As for right now, it's just kind of being used as neighborhood parking. The site itself has been C2 since at least the 1950s, at least when our office did come into existence, that's as far back as our records go. As well as it just being that general parking lot since at least the 1970s. When we were looking at the site, one, there's a couple different things that we do look into whenever it comes to a rezoning request like this. One of the things would be kind of the stress that's put on the area, the unwanted hardships. Something that we did come to the conclusion of is, if you look at the site, there is that church right there directly to the south, as well as the residential that does directly abut the property to the west. We felt that this intent, this change in intensity of zoning from the C2 to a C3 that would open up the area to a lot more intense uses, especially being right next to that residential site right there. A couple examples we did give were things like, by right, you'd be allowed to have a live performance venue there. A couple different industrial services, things of that nature, and while we never want to promote the idea that a business would be there and eventually go away, that is part of what we do look at when it comes to a rezoning is the potential for down the line. And there should be a sheet, I do apologize that it's not on the projector, but we do have a sheet that was created at least for your guys' packets that does go over kind of that change in what the difference between a C2 and a C3 is, and kind of the things that would be allowed by right versus needing a special use permit as time would go on. Going forward, we did feel that because of the fact that with the future land use that we do look at when looking into these areas, wanting to keep it at a residential medium, we felt that this increase of zoning would rob it of, or rob the area of that, it would go away from that residential medium look and feel that the neighborhood does currently have, to be going towards more of a heavier usage if this was approved, and that has caused us to recommend a denial for this application. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, sir. Vote members in the question, reference to staff denying of this particular application. Do we have any?
I'm trying to remember why we deferred it to begin with.
At the time, there was a filing error where we were only showing, and I'll go back to the medium, or the staff report picture here with it. Originally, when it was submitted, if you look, it is actually three sites that are under rezoning, the middle site was the only one that had been submitted for the rezoning.
I remember, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak in favor of this application?
Lady, or, lady, sir.
First, first spokesperson gets 10 minutes, anyone else gets three minutes after that.
I don't know if they quite heard you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I don't know if they quite heard you in reference to the breakdown of time.
I didn't hear you.
All right, let's do this. First spokesperson gets 10 minutes, the second person gets three. All right, so who's, who's got the key presentation? Latest works, all right.
All right, thank you very much for allowing me to come in and.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come in and speak. My name is Jennifer Houghton, H-O-U-G-H-T-O-N. I'm with Remax Executive Realty, 6101 Yuri Drive, Shreveport 71105. And I'm here on behalf of the buyer. I've been selling real estate since 1986. Him and I have been searching for property for him to put a small lot on. We found this one price-wise, location-wise, was excellent for his use. I went through the surrounding area, and although I understand that they are promoting it to be a residential property, today I counted seven churches right in a three-block area from one side to the other, and north and south. So I feel like a lot of the residentials are falling by the wayside. There were several vacant lots that no one has moved forward with to put any new property on. There also, it's really hard speaking with this, there's also several supporting industries right around that same area. There's a transmission repair shop, there's tire repair shop, there's a detail shop right there, right in front of this location, there's a fast money outlet there to borrow, there's a gas station, and then just about half a block on the other side, there is an express DMV place to be able to get your tags and other situations. So I feel like right in that area is a great support for vehicles. And driving through there, I don't know, I may be a little confused on dealership versus a used car lot. He's saying, you know, a dealership with outside, we're not doing anything like that. We're doing a small, used car lot.
And questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before she takes her seat.
Any questions?
All right, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Roger DeKay. I'm a real estate broker with Sealy Real Estate, 333 Texas Street, Suite 1050, Shreveport 71101. I represent the seller. I'm gonna put this back on, but I don't know if you, I've been with many of these, so if I stumble around, it's because I've forgotten, it's been a while. But this property was, as, as Mr. Muller said, it was a parking for a grocery store back, I mean, way back, maybe the 50s, when it was built. And, and it's never been anything else. The reason it's ideal for this use is because it's one big monolithic slab. The entire property is concrete, thick, beautiful concrete that would cost, who knows, $200,000, $300,000 today to pour. So it's, it's got all utilities, and it's just one big slab of concrete, and I don't know what else it's gonna be. We've, we've not had a serious interest in it for years, forever. I mean, we've been asked, the owner, pardon me, the owner has been asked to donate it to several churches, have asked for that, and, but it's never been a, a true commercial use. We've never had anybody come to the table with a deal, so to speak. So we're tickled that we had one in this, this use, this fella. I think that you'll find that he would probably be very amenable to any stipulations that you put on him, and, and so would, so would the owner, the seller, if you wanted a deed restriction of some sort that would limit the use. I imagine the owner would be amenable to doing that. But right now, we understand the needs to protect the neighborhoods and respect that and respect the neighbors. But in this case, you've got some property that's been out of commerce for a generation, and now here's an opportunity to put it back into commerce. So we'd just like for you to consider both sides of it, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Mr. Kay? All right, sir. Anyone else here care to speak in favor of this?
Thank you.
Project. Anyone else care to speak in favor of this project? All right. Hearing none, anyone here would care to speak in opposition to this particular project? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is LJ Wiggins, 617 Hoover Drive, 34 Louisiana, 71106.
Go right ahead, sir. Tell us why you don't want to see this property sold for that purpose.
Well, there are a number of reasons as to why it shouldn't be sold. It's highly residential in spite of all indication of relative to how long that property has been available. It's been available for some odd time. Nevertheless, as far as its initial purpose, and with the underlying of not certain that that purpose is gonna be fulfilled always or what have you, it makes it difficult to accept it in the community. Besides that, if a car lot is necessary, there are a tremendous amount of car lots, lots available on 70th Street that could have been taken and made for a car lot. It's more visible for sure if you want to sell a car. But that area, you know, is not necessarily visible for clientele to see a car as readily as he would or she would see it on 70th Street itself. But there, but there are a number of places, number, number of residents perhaps would not like to see it being there.
All right. Mr. Wiggins, have you had the privilege of talking to any of the other residences relative to your opinion?
Yes, sir, I have. And matter of fact, we were notified about a week or two before this, this, this meeting was set to commence. And, but verbally, I've, I've heard, matter of fact, I have a letter that a lady has read stating that she would, that it would not be, all because of the fact that there are plenty of car lots available on 70th that are empty at the present time.
If you have it with you, our clerk would be happy to make that a part of our records, your letter that you have. Any questions for Mr. Wiggins from board members? All right, sir, thank you very much. Anyone else present who care to speak in opposition to this particular request? Anyone else present care to speak in opposition? Seeing not, this is an opportunity for those who are proposing this property would come back for rebuttal if you choose to do so. Would you care to make a rebuttal?
Yes.
Please come forward.
I am a residential sales associate, so I do sell a lot of real estate in Shreveport and Bossier. I drove around through this area extensively today, and I unders-
We'll have to start at the beginning with the name and address.
Oh, sorry.
It's being recorded.
Okay, I'm gonna take this off. Jennifer Houghton, 6101 Yuri Drive, Remax Executive Realty. Like I said, I am a residential sales associate in Shreveport, have been selling since 1997 here. I sell a lot of real estate property. I drove around today through this area, although I understand their feeling that they want to keep it residential. There are more vacant lots in that area within a three-block area than there are houses. I took pictures and counted about 20 houses in a three-block wide and three-block depth of residential property. So I feel like the, this will not impact any growth in that area, even though there are vacant lots, no one has made any attempt to purchase a property, a vacant lot in there and, and put in a new house. Thank you.
All right. Any questions from the Houghton board members? All right, this particular time, any comments from board members relative to this particular case?
I assume that there would be fencing and stuff required? No, sorry. I assume there'd be fencing and stuff required since it, is it, is that one, is it right next to a house, like right next door is a house?
There will be fencing required where it abuts residential.
Pardon me?
It's not residential.
That's not residential.
It's a residential house, but it's not zoned.
It's not, it's not residential.
And I think the best problem with, with the site is that, that was the reason that we struggled with this site.
I don't know if you can put it up on screen, the actual picture of the area? Okay, where the red mark is, you see that right to the left of that? Are those people living in houses there?
Yes.
Yes.
As well as there is a residential lot right there on the corner across the street, my finger is.
Okay, and so it is residential and people are living in it? Okay.
It probably would have been a good thing during the transition from the previous zoning map to this map, that this property was recognized as being basically residential. We would have took a look also yesterday, but that was not done. It would have been impossible for the group to have determined all of the zoning changes that needed to be made. This is something that is probably unfair to the residents of the 71st Street because it's basically all residential in which churches are part of residence in many instances, and a school. And that is part of the reason that the staff recommended the denial, since you have a major commercial corridor in 70th Street, just one block to the north. All right, thank you, Mr. clerk. Any other comments from board members?
I have a question.
Question, go right ahead.
You indicated this was a slab, concrete slab, pretty much over the whole lot. Is this being perhaps utilized as overflow parking by some of the adjacent churches, or is it just, is it blocked off where people cannot get to it now? I'm just trying to figure out, perhaps maybe if some of the surrounding churches are using this as a, as maybe overflow parking or such.
Mr. Chairman, he cannot answer that question because rebuttals have been made, all questions have been asked, unless you choose to go suspend the rules and go out of order to allow him to come back. All right, okay.
Is motion to suspend the rules?
We have a motion to suspend the rules. Get a second. Oh, I've got a motion from Ms. Lee, a second from Ms. Cooper, to suspend the rules to allow the question to be answered about the use of the parking space. Sir, would you care to come back and answer that question?
To the best of my ability.
And give us your name again.
Okay.
Roger DeKay, Sealy Commercial Real Estate, 333 Texas Street, Suite 1050, Shreveport The owner of the property has not given permission to any organizations or any individuals to use that property for anything. Occasionally, the city of Shreveport, water and sewer will use it to park when they're going and coming, and sometimes SREP Co. will use it similarly kind of as a, a place to get out of the way, but none of the churches, none of the neighbors, nobody has explicit permission to use that property. So I, occasionally, I'll drive by and see a vehicle on it, but again, nobody has permission to use it.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right.
Any other questions from board members? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Tough one.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Elverson to approve. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second, most, second from?
Newbert.
Ms. Newbert. All those in favor, vote in, if you're voting in favor of approving it, vote yes. If you're voting a not too private vote, no. Think I said that just right? All right, we have four in favor and three in opposition. So the motion passes. I believe I see that right? Can you put that list back up there and see where you have Mr. Andrews?
I thought you had a yes.
I'm sorry?
You had a yes.
No, that's not the way I voted. If you'll look, put it back up, you'll see you have Ms. Vice Chair and Ms. DeMorto's chair. That may be where you throw it off.
Yeah, I think you can vote again if that's not clear.
Mr. Chair, I just discussed it with the attorney, and she said, just to make the record clear, you may want to vote again. All right, to make the records clear, we'll vote again. All those in vote, voting in favor, vote yes. If you're voting in opposition, vote no. Is that what I hear the attorney saying?
Yes, yes.
We do need to get our chairs correct. Yeah, let me one second.
That's what I'm asking her to do.
Just to point, point a note, Mr. Chairman, can, and legal counsel, can the votes change or do the votes have to stay the same?
Well, if, if somebody's saying that they voted and it showed incorrectly, then it would be an error and that you have to vote again.
Well, we had four approval and three against.
You're not listening to me. I did not vote the way it showed.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that.
So I guess I'm saying is just for the, clear it up.
Are we ready, Maria? Got it up?
Touch your tablet down there?
Touch my tablet?
Say your name. On your voting thing?
Yes, it has, it's right now. Okay.
I don't know if mine was.
Mine didn't lit up yet.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's right above.
Okay, we're ready to vote now. Here we go. If you apologize for interrupting, but we have the representative from the parish attorney in the audience, and we'd like to extend the opportunity for him to come up because there are parish cases that will be addressed by you today. If you'll be of some kindness to identify that person? That is Mr. Henry Bernstein. He's sitting out there comfortably, but I'd be much more comfortable with him up here
Thank you. Thank you all for everything you're doing. I'm already done, so I can't schmooze my way in, but I really appreciate everybody coming here and doing what you're doing under the circumstances. Thank you very much.
All right, we're ready for case number 20-5-P zoning request, Richard Nelson. Richard Nelson, okay, go right ahead.
Hi, once again, my name is Ben Muller. I'm the planner that has been assigned to this case. This is 20-5-P, which is a rezoning request for 7763 South Lake Shore Drive. This would be a reverting to the, a reversion of zoning to the pre-2017 UDC zoning that it was given. It is a request for R17 to RA. The applicant is requesting approval to restore the zoning of a .47 acre tract of land, R17 single-family residential to RA residential agriculture, which is the- R one, seven, single-family residential to RA residential agriculture, which is the, uh, type of zoning it was under before we adopted the twenty seven UDC. Um, the proposed rezoning would remain in line with the surrounding area. If you do look at the map towards the south there, uh, the land is completely RA, uh, already existing. It would be keeping in line with, uh, basically all of the zoning. When I did talk to the applicant when this process was kind of starting to begin with, I believe he hadn't even known the land had been rezoned, uh, back when twenty, you know, back during the two thousand seventeen zoning change. So, he is hoping to just have it reverted back to what it was before and continue being able to do with what, uh, he pleases with the land, which I believe, in this case at least, he is hoping to put a manufactured home on the property, which would be allowed by right in an RA. For the surrounding area, there are a few relevant cases. Uh, there was a approval back in eighty-five from an RA to an R one for a single-family home. Uh, there was RA to B three, which was the equivalent to C three back in the day, uh, for the use of Marina and RV campground, uh, as well as, uh, to the southwest there, that R one, seven property back in two thousand fourteen, uh, which I believe was, uh, passed to allow for a parish fire station that is located there, uh, to expand itself a bit. Going forward, uh, we did feel that the RA district would be keeping in line with the future land trends that are for the area. The area is designated as residential low under the future land use map for the UDC, or for the master plan, I apologize. Uh, and so that would be keeping in line with the overall character of the existing neighborhood and would allow for, as I mentioned earlier, the manufactured home, uh, that the applicant is hoping to eventually place on the property. Um, and so because of this, we are recommending approval of this reversion to the rezoning, or sorry, reversion to the old zoning before the code. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
And the recommendation on the staff?
Uh, approval to rezone.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Ben before we call on the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to represent Mr. Nelson? Please come forward.
Yes, sir, I'm Richard Nelson, landowner. My home is across the street, seventy-seven forty South Lake Shore Drive.
Any comments you care to share with the board relative to this request?
I agree with the board. I like Ben.
You got to know when to hold them, huh?
I like that. Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Uh, well, I'm familiar with Pine's Road, Vine Hill, uh, Pine's Road, and that property really looks nice down there, I can tell you that much. Uh, if there are no questions for, for Mr. Nelson, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Any questions from board members before we call for a motion? Questions, motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Curtis?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cooper. All those in favor, please vote. In opposition, vote no. Thank you very much. Got it. All right, we're calling for case number twenty dash one dash C A C, closure and abandonment, this particular time, all right.
Hello, how's it going? Okay, so this application was submitted by Swepco. They're looking to close and abandon a seven hundred ninety-foot dedication of the Monk House Drive, uh, dedication north of the Greenwood Road and Jefferson Page intersection. Uh, this dedication lies between the Shreveport Bojor Operations Center that Swepco uses. Um, it's the, over here, you can see, right here, which was the old, uh, par three golf course. On the other side here, this is the old Hillsdale Elementary School. Swepco's in the process of purchasing that elementary school. Um, so, they want to be able to close and abandon that dedication so that they could better use their site. Um, it's not relied on from any of the property owners nearby. They won't be denied any access. And I know if this does get approved, they do want to, uh, combine the dedication into either lot. I'm not exactly sure how they plan on doing that because we have not gotten an application submitted for that yet. Um, but just so you are aware, the dedication, and, uh, get this one out here. The dedication would just be split down the middle for the zoning. So, the zoning of the dedication would just assume whatever is on either side of, of that dedication. Um, so, since there's no, uh, negative impact to any of the surrounding property owners and because the engineering department did not express any opposition, we do recommend approval of this, uh, closure and abandonment. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone here to represent Swepco today? Obviously, you're not a lineman.
Good afternoon, Michael Corbin, external affairs manager for Swepco. Uh, we simply ask that you would, uh, support this closure and abandonment. This is part of our ongoing project at this property with our new training center and, uh, with the purchase of Hillsdale Elementary, um, moving operations center out there as well. So, we think we're making some huge improvements out here and, uh, it's going to be good for the, good for the neighborhood. And as was said earlier, this is a right-of-way that's never been used. Uh, there's no roadway there presently. Uh, it's just a, a, a right-of-way on a map, so we asked that you would approve it. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Corbin?
Good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor? Anyone present who would care to speak in opposition to this request?
Mr. Chair? As, as, as happened often, we have, we have a visitor with us today, uh, that, um, she would like to acknowledge him as the councilwoman from District A, uh, Ms. Tabitha Taylor.
Ms. Taylor, would you stand? Because some of us don't know who you are.
I knew that in the mask you would recognize it.
There you go. Thank you for stopping by. All right, any opposition to this request? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion?
Some of them.
Motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Ms. DiMarito. All those in favor, please vote yes. Opposition vote no. Motion's carried. Thank you very much, sir. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I do know that I abstained in that, if I work for the company.
If you state your name and why you abstained, please, go ahead.
I'm Del Calvin, uh, employee of the company, so I abstained from the vote.
Thank you very much. That keeps me from having a lot of good days. So, we'll move to case number twenty dash two dash C A C, Brentwood Acquisition Dash Shreveport INC.
Hello again?
All right.
All right, this time I'll introduce myself. My name is Emily Trant, work with the MPC. I did not do that for the last one. Um, okay, so this next closure and abandonment was submitted on behalf of the Brentwood Hospital. Um, they're looking to close and abandon a seventy-nine foot portion of the alleyway that lies between Vine Street and Wall Street. Um, Brentwood Hospital recently did just get approval from this board back in July for a parking lot expansion special use permit. Uh, the parking lot expansion takes up this portion here near Highland Avenue and goes down to Wall Street. And the closure and abandonment is this section right here. So, there was one concerned neighbor, uh, that did submit a letter for that July hearing. He was worried that if the, uh, closure and abandonment was approved, that he would not be able to access his rear driveway. Um, we found out during that same hearing from the applicant that there was actually an RV that was located about right in this spot here. So, that was preventing him from being able to access Crestwell Avenue. Um, but after that hearing, we did have some MPC inspectors and we had, uh, I think the city of Shreveport Police Department went out. They were able to have that RV removed. Um, we did have them, our inspectors go back out again just on Monday, and they still confirmed that the RV was gone. So, with the RV out of the way, and as long as that, uh, alleyway is properly maintained, which right now it does look quite overgrown, um, if it is maintained, then any of the property owners there will be able to access the alleyway from Crestwell Avenue. There was no opposition from the engineering department. And the special use permit that y'all did approve in July, it was contingent on this alleyway being closed and abandoned, but they did have an alternative alleyway, or, excuse me, an alternative site plan that, um, they could use. It's, it's not the preferred one, but it, it would not be contingent on this closure, so they do have a backup plan. And so we recommend approval of this one as well. Just, again, any questions?
All right, any questions for Ms. Emily? Hearing none, is there anyone present to represent Brentwood Acquisition, Shreveport?
Good morning, or good afternoon, excuse me, uh, Donnie Barker with Mornen Associates, uh, representing Brentwood Hospital. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Barker? All right, sir. Did Mr. Craig pull a rank on you today, did he?
Uh, I think he's, uh, trying to shoot some doves today, so I'm here.
Uh, I remember that point, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward.
My name is Luther Cox Junior. Uh, I live at five twelve Wall Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven, one, one, zero, one. And I would like to thank you all for allowing me to speak. Uh, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused because based on what she just said, I can access my back parking lot, which the city made me build from Crestwell. But the problem is, is that the regional facility is there. And that's what the problem was in the beginning, when it was all concrete. Now it's just mud and grass. So, we stopped using it. I, I don't know what the term of abandonment and closure mean, but the reason we stopped using it was because we would get stuck in the mud. And so, we had to come, we, we would come around on Wall Street to just park on that parking lot, which I don't know who that parking lot belongs to, who that, who that land belongs to. So, now if we can access it, if I can access it from Crestwell, I don't have a problem. But I, I don't, I don't see how I can access it from Crestwell to Highland. And all I have to do is make a left or a right turn to go up into the, uh, the alleyway and go to my back parking lot. So, I, I'm, I'm just not sure, and looking at the map, I'm just not sure. Because the parking lot that they already have is right in back of my house. Uh, so, I don't see how I can access it. I, I, I don't understand by looking at the map.
All right, sir, Mr. Cox, Mr. Jing, would you care to, to identify the property or the area where he's talking about with whichever staff member did that research? And show us what, see if we can identify what he's talking about.
Let Emily go on up.
Come and give you that information, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Cox, I believe you live right over here, is that right?
Is this Wall Street right here?
This is Wall Street, right here.
Oh, yeah, I live right.
So, this is Highland Avenue, this is Wall Street. So, this, these two properties here are what, um, the Brentwood Hospital owns, and that's the site plan that they just had approved that includes that, those two properties. I believe your property is right here.
Can we put the area up for that?
Yes.
What?
This might help. Yeah, here you go. I believe this is your house, is that right?
I think part of the problem, boy, that we have is that the alley is not being properly maintained. That if the alley was cleaned out and, uh, made passable, Mr. Cox would have access in and out of, of his property. That's one of the reasons that I was happy to see, uh, Ms. Tabitha Taylor here because that's a responsibility of the city of Shreveport to allow access and utilization of public alleys. And this is one that you can look through your pictures, uh, has not been properly maintained and therefore is not usable for the citizens. I hope that answers your question.
No, sir, it doesn't because from Highland Street to the back of my house, they cut it. But they cut it now because they want to use it. But if they cut up to a certain point, that's what they do. But beyond that point to where the regional center is, there is grass for the lot that they just bought from my neighbor when his house burned down, they bought that lot. And so that part where my house is, is maintained. And I don't know whether the city cuts it of where, uh, if, if Brentwood cuts it.
But are you speaking of the rest of the alley that's not maintained that you cannot travel down?
Right.
And that's what I was sharing with you, that the city of Shreveport, uh, can maintain the alley and clear all of that out. And now that Ms. Taylor is aware, possibly she will, uh, ask for them to clean up that alley so that the citizens of, I guess you on Vine?
No, sir, I'm on Wall.
Wall.
And then there's a lot.
Yeah, the citizens on Wall can utilize the public alley as it's designated to be used.
So, you're concerned about this portion of the alley? So, and what Mr. Barker's explaining is that, that is, that is a city's, uh, public right-of-way, so they, they can maintain that lot. So, you'll still have access to Crestwell from your back alley.
And let me apologize to Ms., Ms. Taylor, that's not her district, that's, uh, Councilwoman Fuller's district. Ms. Taylor, you don't need any help, do you? I got you. But before he walks out the door, we also have the city attorney visiting with you, uh, Mr. Andrews. And he can ensure that laws are upheld and enforced. That's Mr. Ron Lattier. It's amazing what these masks will hide, Mr. Lattier. I'm so sorry, didn't recognize you. Mr. Cox, I assure you, you've gotten enough folk working on it. If you, if you'll step right over there close to where Mr. Clark is and give them some information, uh, I think that, uh, the ball is rolling. In the meantime, is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of this? All right? And I feel real certain there's no rebuttal unless I'm misinterpreting staff's, um, presentation.
Yeah, he's coming forward. I think he may have, he may be able to add some clarity to some of the issues that were raised just a moment ago.
I was just going to say, it just kind of sounded to me like that was maybe a issue with the maintenance of the alleyway.
Name and address.
Oh, uh, Donnie Barker, Mornen Associates. Uh, I was just going to say, it sounded to me like the gentleman's, uh, concerns were really with the maintenance of the alleyway. Uh, and I just wanted to reiterate that, um, this parking's pretty important to the hospital. That parking situation's out there very bad, it's very bad, and, um, uh, we'd like your approval on this.
Thank you, sir. All right, having said that, uh, board members, any questions? If there are no further questions, I'm going to call for a vote, a motion for a vote.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Elberson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. All those in favor, please say yes. Opposition vote no. Thank you very much. We'll move on to case, item twelve, case number, closure and abandonment. All right, please come forward, state your name.
Ms. Alice, Alice Correa will be filling in for Jake Pallett today.
All right, very good.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, this, this case is, uh, the applicant is the city of Shreveport on behalf of FW Property LLC. Uh, was requested for a closure and abandonment of the, of the fifty by two-hundred-foot strip of land that you see on the map there. Uh, FW Property LLC owns all of the adjoining property to this parcel. There was a previous attempt to close and abandon this dedication. It came before you in two thousand and eighteen. It came before you in 2018. However, there are so, there was some confusion about the plaque. The recorded plaque did not show this dedication and easement on it, whereas the survey that was provided for the other application did. So it did not make it to the city council because it's been, some time has passed and that there's a different owner. It was requested to come back and present this again to you for closure and abandonment. In 2018, you did approve this request. As noted, this is a dedication. The only access that it provides is to the property owner who is requesting it. No other property owners are affected by this. As noted, there is a 20-foot sweatcoat easement going along this dedication. This is going to the driveway to the residential care facility administrative buildings. That easement will not be affected by closure and abandonment of this property. As there are no other property owners affected by this and the question being made, the city engineering department did not have any concerns with this, we're recommending approval.
All right, any questions? I believe this piece of property, we've seen several times before, is that right, Mr. Cor? Yes, sir, you see it on a regular basis. Yes, sir, thank you very much. All right, any questions, board members? Is there anyone here representing this particular property request? Would care to speak? All right. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion from the staff, I'm sorry, from the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Joseph, second by?
Newbert.
Ms. Newbert, all in favor, please vote yes. Opposition vote no. Thank you very much. The vote of case number 29, 20, 99, D.C. D.C. is a zoning map amendment. All right.
Good afternoon again. As Stephen mentioned, Jake Pallett is the assigned planner for this case. He's not able to be here today, so I'll be presenting it on his behalf. This is a request from Ms. Maria Carvajal Monroe to rezone the property from C1 back to R17, single-family residential. The intent is to live in the existing house that is located on the property. As you can see, it's on the corner of Karen Avenue and Wagoner. All the property adjacent to the south, as well as to the east of it, is residential properties. Even though the one next to it is zoned as C1 Commercial, and there are other C1 Commercial properties along Wagoner in that block, they're all residential structures. Directly across from it is the large retail center, Continual Super One Grocery Store. Across to the west is some light commercial for banking, financial institution, insurance company, a daycare center, I believe. And then a little further to the north is some other retail. However, as you go south, this area is largely residential. And it shows up in the master plan as being futurably envisioned to remain residential. This property in question, it is C1 because back in 2003, it had been rezoned for the use of a daycare center. And if you look at it now, it still has some of the daycare center signs. However, you know that it is a residential structure. So they're just requesting rezoning to be restored, I say restored, returned to R17 so that they can live in that existing structure. As already noted, most of the area is residential and it is in line with the future master plan. So we are recommending approval of the request.
All right, any questions for a staff person, for board members? If not, is there anyone here representing the request for this property change? Anyone present? Then I'm gonna ask board members if you have any objections to moving forward with approval or disapproval of this request. Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Curtis to approve, or do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. DeMarito. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposition vote no. Thank you very much, that motion passes. I believe that concludes the request portion of our agenda. We'll move to item number 14, old business. Hearing none, item number 15, is there any new business to be shared with the board today? Item number 16, other matters to be reviewed by the commission. Mr. Clark, any comments from the director's seat? Yes, sir, if I may, just a few. First of all, if I could, in the research area, we have a whole lot of different projects going on. And I'd just like for them to be shared with you. Like Adam Bailey to share research that community planning is doing. Stephen Jean would discuss some of the things that are happening with the land use planning in our office. And Reginald Jordan can share with you the research that we're doing in reference to businesses and their development in Shreveport.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, so, thank you, board members. Community Planning Division is continuing to look at the Master Plan Progress Report. And I believe it was July, we sent you a draft. We're continuing to refine that draft in hopes of getting a finalized version in the next month or so. On Friday, September 11th, the Master Plan Advisory Committee was gonna, scheduled to have a Zoom meeting. So Ms. DeMarito, Mr. Elberson, Mr. Colvin, and we'll contact Ms. Bessie Smith on that Zoom meeting with an agenda at a later date. We're continuing to look at re-annexation and annexation procedures in the state. Hope to have some data for you in the next board meeting. We're looking at the possibility, hopefully with the parish's help, of creating on our website a one-stop shop. Even without the parish's assistance, we're continuing to look at how we can do that on our own. And finally, and Mr. Clark might shed a little more light on this, there may be some co-text amendments coming in October. That's all I have, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Really importantly, the digital application process that Adam was alluding to, is an initiative that was brought forward to the parish commission by Commissioner Chavez. This is an opportunity to strengthen, as you watched, and we all are very aware, that the development and growth in Shreveport was slow prior to COVID. And after COVID, it almost come to a screeching halt. And we're trying to find ways every day to attract four businesses to Shreveport, make it easier for them to find information on how you get started in the City of Shreveport and how you obtain the necessary approvals and the necessary license. And we think that this would be an excellent opportunity if we could pull everything together. I think that Adam had shared with me that New Orleans has a one-stop-shop program in another city, I think it was in Arizona. But it's an excellent opportunity where you just go online, you go to the MPC webpage and push a button, and everything that you would need to do would start being available for your ability to examine. And you'll be able to go to those things. So we don't know what the parish commission will do, but they have ignited a flame upon us that regardless, that this is something that Shreveport and Caddo Parish desperately needs in order to reach out across the country and make people aware of how to get into the City of Shreveport and Parish of Caddo and obtain the necessary permits and approvals. Mr. Dean?
On the land development side, and it's something that was alluded to just a moment ago, that would be an eventual co-text amendment. We had a number of applicants or would-be applicants that were quite frustrated about the ability to find property that was already zoned for vehicle dealerships. C4 is the only by right district for vehicle dealerships. The rest of it, you'd have to do it as a special use permit. So what we began to do, we actually surveyed, I think, seven different cities to see how they were handling that. And we also had some suggestions even before we went and looked at the different cities. And we are, as you might know, the auto mall, the entire auto mall, which is, you know, all vehicle dealerships without door display, is all zone C3. So they're allowed to stay there because they're deemed a legal special use because they were there prior to the code. But just finding something that's out there, being able to find a piece of property that's already zoned, it's just not available. So we did the survey, we looked at the different locations, and we're gonna bring to you to open it up back to C3 to allow vehicle dealerships by right instead of a special use permit. Also allow it in I1 and IMU. That would expand the available sites quite a bit. Some of the people in that industry really felt like that we basically just zoned them out of opportunities to find properties. So we'll be bringing that to you next month. And we also, when we looked at that industrial district, there was, there was, didn't make sense to allow the dealerships by right in the districts and not allow the enclosed dealerships as well. So that would be the change that we'll be bringing to you in the next meeting.
And lastly, Mr. Chair, like I said, Reginald Jordan will share with you the transition. It's an interesting transition of, and we track new businesses with certificates of occupancy, apply for, apply for and actually issue. And the transition, and I'll just let Regia tell you what the transition is, but it's an interesting transition with how businesses are developing in Shreveport during the COVID-19 period. Reginald?
All right. We got it. If y'all noticed, I handed these sheets, I had these sheets laid out for y'all. So what we're gonna look at is in the city. If y'all, if y'all see the ZPC, it's on the one sheet page. The ZPC is commercial businesses in the parish and ZPH is home-based businesses in the parish. So just to give you a comparison, you know, with the COVID, a lot of home-based businesses have been started. Last year in the parish, we, last year in the parish, we had zero from the month of August to September, the same time period from now, last month to this month. In 2019, there were zero commercial businesses in the parish acquired and zero home-based businesses that applied for certificates of occupancy. This year, both, both were two. They had two in the parish and they had two, well, they had two commercial, two home-based in the parish. Now, when we look at the other sheets, we're gonna look at the COCs, which are commercial in the city, and CORs, which are home-based businesses in the city. And if you look at the papers in front of you, your home base or your commercial businesses last year in this month, there were 53 that were issued. This year, because of COVID, we only had 15, which was a 38% decrease. But if you look at the home-based businesses, which is the model that's really trending right now, being, you know, everybody at home, Zooming, doing what they do, they can't go out to work, creating innovative ways to make money. We have an increase of last year, we had 30 in the month period. This year, we have 66 in one, in one month. So that's, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty significant. And that was like, like a table.
Are you finished, Reg?
And that was like 120% increase in the time period.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark, did you say?
No, go ahead, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, no, I was just saying that that was 120% increase in the month from last year to this year of home-based businesses that have been acquired. And I didn't bring the chart, but we discussed it, and I mean, the home-based businesses have just been exploding. Every month, every month, we get new businesses, every day, someone coming in and getting a new home-based business in the City of Shreveport. And that's, that's it that I have for the report.
One other thing, and we're working with the city attorney and possibly with the parish attorney. As you've noticed, it's been almost impossible for Mrs. Smith to come to meetings. And I know how Mrs. Smith feels about her service on the Metropolitan Planning Commission. She's been here most of the time that I've been here. And reached out to the city attorney's office that, I shared with Janine that I was gonna call her on the spot, but the chairman of the city council, Mr. James Flurry, is unable to attend meetings. And the city has figured out a way for him to attend and vote virtually. So we are working on getting the opportunity to that approval for Mrs. Smith also. And Janine, if you could just share real briefly where we are on that.
Well, I've read the case, there was a case out of Alexandria where it was a gentleman, he was in his 90s, and his doctor recommended that he not attend the meetings. And the court in that case said, based on the fact, they looked at the American Disability Act, and they determined that it was a reasonable accommodation in this situation because of his illness. And because with Zoom meetings to be the way they are now, it's not just like a telephone meeting, that if because of her ill, the illness, and she's not, you know, doctor says that she should not be in a public place because of whatever illness she has, that that was enough to allow for a Zoom meeting for one person.
With your direction, Mr. Chair, we will pursue that, that opportunity to, once again, give Mrs. Smith the opportunity to participate in your meetings every month. We would certainly like for you to try your best. She's one of the most enthusiastic board members that we've had the privilege of working with. So whatever you can do to make that happen, I'm sure we'd appreciate it. Thank you. We are, we're struggling with being back in the chambers. We're communicating and I shared with Stephen that the planners presenting are less than exciting in their presentations. But it's something new for them. And I understand what they're dealing with. And we're, we're working toward making sure that their presentations are much more exciting. They're gonna love you for this, but making sure that their presentations are much more exciting. And we are expanding the staff reports to include more information about why applications are being filed, more information, background information about the applicant, more perspectives from the applicants in order to help you with the decision that you make. And we're trying to give you options on your decisions. We're giving you reasons to deny and reasons to approve so that you'll have all of that information before you as you are making your decisions. I think it's gonna be real beneficial to you. And I think you're gonna find the new staff reports somewhat better than the previous staff reports. That said, we have found, and I share this with you periodically, we have found that, you may remember the LiveShare case where you recommended approval for the rezoning and the closure and abandonment. And the city council prevented the closure and abandonment case. And we found that, that the, that LiveShare would have loved to have met with the residents and shared with them the opportunities, the desire that they have. That was before we started our initiative with the Neighborhood Participation Plan. We think that this plan is going to be a great plan. It would have helped with the application that was denied today because unfortunately, and I understand your position, but unfortunately, if there is not a requirement to have a meeting with the citizens, most businesses will not reach out to the neighborhoods. They'll take their chance of coming down here and, and where they have limited time to explain exactly what they're proposing to do, what they are willing to do and to mitigate the negative impacts of applications and what they're willing to do in reference to. and what they are willing to, to do in reference to making impacts into the community. So, possibly a little bit later, we'll come back again to you. You approve, you approve that meetings are recommended by the staff. The land use planners are recommending meetings. There are no desires, and there have been no meetings. A lot of times, these meetings could, could give all type of benefits to both parties because when they come here, there's a very small space to discuss their application. You get ten minutes, and then you get another person, you got three minutes, where they could go to a meeting and the neighborhood would have however much time they need in order to question and get the information about the application. So, we continue to, in our research, we continue to bring back to you this information. Don't want to offend anyone, but we continue to bring it back because the benefits that can possibly reap are astronomical, especially as we go forward and we, and we continue to develop. Just wanted to share that with you. And I said this would be a short meeting, so I won't make it any longer, Mr. Chair. Those are all the comments that I have. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other comments from board members, staff members, I'm sorry? Any comments from board members? Then I would certainly entertain a motion. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Elberston.